Welcome to the 5:30 PM, November 28, 2023 Presentations Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing its one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take formal action on the agenda items. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions and requests. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. We are on special recognition and presentations. Agenda item 4A, which is monument and welcome signs. And staff will present an update on the monument and welcome signs. No action is required on this item.
Aye, aye.
So, yeah, as City Manager said, we're here to provide an update on our monument, gateway, and pole mountain signs. The monument signs are the replacement of the big signs that we currently have. And the pole mountain signs was requested previously by council to look at some smaller signs to place throughout the city, similar to like you see at Cocoa Village. So in August, we put in our request for proposal out for the monument signs and the pole mountain signs, and we received four proposals back. We put a selection committee together that evaluated the proposals and ranked the submittals based on experience, qualifications, design, and technical specs and pricing. The selection committee voted unanimously to request that council approve the rankings and move forward with the highest ranking firm, Donbell Signs. Three concepts were submitted with this proposal. Oops. So at the 6:30 meeting, you will be asked to award the contract, approve the budget amendment, and provide directions on these three concepts. Once the contract is executed, staff will take the direction that you guys provided at that meeting and work with the firm to finalize the designs for these signs. The priority for replacement of the monument signs, we're going to start at Garden Street because that one is outside the DOT right away, so we know we can move forward with that one pretty quickly. And depending on budget, we might be able to get a second one in. We're not sure about that yet. And the pole mounted sign locations, we'll have to determine based on budget how many and with FDOT approval because you really want those on your entrances to your city limits, so most of those are not city roads. So next, we're going to show the three concepts that were provided. At this meeting, you guys can discuss opinions, but we want direction provided at the 6:30 meeting. So this is Concept A. It's similar to the sign out front of City Hall. See, obviously, the bigger sign for the monument sign and then the smaller sign on the right. They also provided some options for new directional signs. This is Concept B. It doesn't have the fancy Titusville or whatever we call that. It does have the welcome two on top of that, which is different. And then on the right side are the smaller signs and the directional signs. And this is Concept B. So once we determine what concept we're going to go with and finalize, and the company said they can tweak small things, you know, pretty much anything we wanted, like with that one, I would remove one of the seals. We don't need two seals next to each other. So things like that will finalize with them. And that is the end, so we can go back to any of these you want.
Member Nelson.
That's what happens when you're fast, you guys.
I know.
That happens when you're fast.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You guys are slow.
Oh, she wasn't ready.
Yeah. So I like B and C better than it.
What was it? B and C?
I like A.
So that's A.
No, that's A.
That's C.
Slow.
Oh, she was pointing it, yeah. I should have put them all on one.
That's B. B's nice.
I can go and get out of the way, and you guys can fight over there. I like A.
Yeah, that's right, Joe.
Joe, that's wrong.
Hey, let me go back there. I think they all look good. I'm not going to get all upset about either of them. My first glance, I kind of thought C looked a little richer, a little, I don't know. I don't use the word classier because that makes you all look good, but I thought C looked good. But again, they all look good. They all look good.
Well, wait a minute. Do we have to have them all the same?
Probably financially.
Financially, yeah. With this current contract, we finalize one design because it costs to move into the design.
I'm probably not going to overly fight for any of them. I just think that I like C better, but they all look good.
So, yeah, so at the 6:30 meeting, when we get to this approval, we're going to want kind of a consensus on which one we should move forward with. I don't need, you know, specifics. We'll finalize the design, but any opinions you have, I'll take down and take on to the final design.
So the next meeting, we'll end up with a consensus, but what I'm getting at is I think they all look good, and I won't have a problem either way. Member Stokel.
Yep, no, that's fine. We can talk about it at the 6:30. I was just thinking, I feel like as we're evolving a little bit more modern, and I always think about if you're far away and what's easy to read and see some of these, I feel like the seal can be very difficult to read. So, but we can talk about it at the next meeting. I'm good. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I like commonality. I like everything looking uniform throughout the city. And that's why I like A. Just make everything look beautiful.
A looks good.
Make your faces.
Uh, member Nelson? Are you there?
I was just saying, I'll make your faces.
Oh, there you go. Yeah. Really and truly, I guess we don't have to go further and try to consensus until next meeting, but I don't think any of us feel bad about any of them. I think they all look good. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. City Manager.
Onto item 4B, which is the draft comprehensive plan amendments to the future land use, transportation, and housing elements in the draft land development regulations. Staff will present the amendments to the future land use, transportation, and housing elements of the comprehensive plans for purposes of scheduling a transmittal hearing. No actions required on this item.
Anything we need to do on that right now?
No, sir. Just listen to the presentation.
Okay. Why are we here? It's not a lot there. Counsel, anything you want out of that?
I have some questions, but I think I'd rather wait until after Brad does the presentation.
So the last time, sure, the last time we brought this to you was we gave you a summary of the conversation that we had with the public that you had asked us to conduct. We had three separate meetings with the public, one in a meeting about the downtown policies and the code that's being drafted, proposed here with the community in the downtown at St. Gabriel's Church, another one here in City Hall.
Yep, I remember that.
And then a third one at the Harry T. Moore Center on the comp plan policies and the code changes that were being proposed for the area that was originally titled or called Titusville West or West Titusville, which is now, some members of the community of it would like it to be renamed to be Cannaveral Heights. So three major pilot or study areas that Canyon Associates, which is now Kimberly Horn, worked on and proposed to you. We've proposed to you several presentations, and then your direction was to go back to the public. So that's what we did. And then when we presented that to you, what I said to you was that the first meeting we had, I thought we had a lot of good, we had a very good response, and it was a very well-attended meeting. We provided some summary of those comments to you. Many members of the public didn't present any objection to the one component of that comp plan amendment that we're proposing to you about density. And if you recall, we're proposing something unique in there called density pool, which is not increasing the density in downtown, but kind of allowing it to be reallocated and recalculated in a different way. And it includes some incentives as well. The second meeting we had was on the commercial corridors, called gateway corridors, and that is a new section that Eliza and her team are proposing into our comprehensive plan. So instead of, like in the downtown, we're tweaking or proposing some tweaks to the comprehensive plan policies and then proposing some tweaks to our current code, the gateway quarters, it's a brand-new section that will be added to our future land use element called gateways. It's more or less like a land use overlay. And in complement that, to help implement it, will be a new zoning tool, a gateway overlay as well. And so we had a conversation with members of the public who attended that meeting. Wasn't as well-attended as we hoped, but we did have some very good feedback from it. There was a lot of good support for it. I gained, I got from that meeting. The third meeting, though, was a little more challenging only because we had a lot of questions about housing and what the increase in density and some of the incentives that were proposed would do to the neighborhood, that Cannaveral Heights area. It was a really well-attended meeting at the Harry T. Moore Center. I think it was more of an educational meeting to help people understand what the comprehensive plan is and what our goal really is and what the code, how that really works. So a lot of questions being thrown at us about how zoning, how it all works in general. So we treated it as more of an educational opportunity, but we did get a lot of good feedback, especially after the meeting. People thanked us for coming out to them and speaking to them about this. We did have some members of the public that wanted to speak with a consultant. Consultant has spoken with several, a couple of members of the community outside of this whole process and answered their questions. Eliza is here to help answer your specific questions about the comprehensive plan policies that were being proposed to you and the code changes. At your 6:30 meeting, we have an advisability asking you for direction as to going forward the next step, and that is to go ahead and allow us to schedule transmittal hearings for the comprehensive plan amendments. And those amendments begin on page 12 of your packet. The downtown portion starts on 26. The urban village, changes to the urban, I'm sorry, not urban mixed-use land use policies begin on page 31. And then the new gateway portion of the future land use element begins on page 51. And in each section, you'll see some tweaks to existing policies or new policies, and you'll also see the incentives. If you agree to allow us to schedule those transmittal hearings, those particular policies and amendments will be sent to the state for review after you've held your public hearings. Then you'll have another opportunity, when we get back any comments or objections from the state, to address them, and you'll have another set of public hearings to consider While that's going on, the code sections that were proposed by Eliza and her team, the staff will continue working on those. So that will not be sent to the state, the code changes. Those are things that we, a staff and the city council and the community will work on to help implement the policies if these are adopted. So again, our advisability at your 6:30 meeting is to request that you schedule the transmittal hearings. Those will be scheduled and brought back to you for official action to be sent to the state, and then we'll wait to see what the state says and then consider holding public hearings. While that's happening, we'll continue working on the code changes and continue working with the public on those code changes. Eliza Leona is here to answer any questions that you have about these policies and about these code changes.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, Brad, I don't want to muddy the water right off the bat. Now, especially in the Cannaveral Heights neighborhood and looking at the zoning map that we have, I know that, or tell me if I'm wrong, and is some of the things that we may decide on the Live Local Act may affect some of the properties that are in this particular Cannaveral Heights area?
Correct. The Live Local Act does say that we would have to allow a live local qualifying project in a mixed-use area. So this area that's currently zoned urban mixed-use would fall into that category. What the consultant is proposing is to expand the land use category to a larger area within the study area, and that study area is on page 98 of your packet. Now, because of Live Local, and we started this project before Live Local was even considered and especially before it became effective, we have been speaking eternally and with, we will talk with the consultant about options, about maybe finding some ways to see if we can tweak the code changes to help address Live Local in some way.
And that's what was so important. I know that you're trying to do that because we started to work on this prior to, but I know that as I look through all of this, some of the things that they want, I agree, it's going to be a beautiful, you know, beautiful rendition of making some changes, but also that it's going to make some changes that there's a possibility of it making changes because of the Live Local Act that maybe the residents of that area are not totally familiar with or are concerned about that. That's very much on my, not to say anything is going to be, you know, drastic, but I think because if they don't understand how one is kind of going to overlap the other in a little bit, you know, that's because it's a concern to me because to do that, if that is a part of the effect, that's going to have to be some transitioning. You know what I'm talking, you know? Kind of lead me in that because I want to know how do we go forward and then address that? Because in, I have a list, you put a list in the package of all of the discussion, some of the line items, I just had it in my hand, of the things that were discussed, and they were very good things, you know, about stormwater and all of those issues, how that would be handled and so forth, but that the larger picture, the long-range picture, the 20-year forecast, so to speak, it is going to be affected. And I spent a lot of time looking at that to see how we need to make sure that the residents of that particular area is briefed on, you know, long range, you know, 20 years down the road, something that you may be, I, in my case, maybe leaving to my children, may be a little bit different 20 years from now, and that is a concern to me. If you can tell me how we can look at that and I get some thoughts.
You know, without doing the detailed analysis here, I would note that some of the land that the urban mixed-use is intended to be expanded to is already commercial, which would, I believe, already be eligible for Live Local, and that a substantial amount of what is residential right now would be, is vacant land. So there's much of the single family that is designated is actually kind of large vacant parcels. That's not, that's not everything, but...
And I agree with that, but you know, what is commercial will be commercial, but under the Live Local Act, sometimes the commercial also expands to some residential touches as well.
Correct. And just to clarify, the land that we're proposing, the commercial land that we are adding mixed-use to is going to be eligible for Live Local under the current condition and under the proposed condition. So it would be eligible for Live Local either way, whether or not you make this change.
And that's fine. I mean, I can understand that, but has that been explained to the residents of that area? And what that actually means? You know, that's my concern. I'm not saying a whole lot is going to change, but because when we started putting this together, Live Local was not sitting on our shoulders. But now that Live Local is sitting on our shoulders, I think that they need to know about what that would look like, even though it's not changing much, but because we have that, these are some of the possibilities that may come before us down the road.
Mr. Robson, we do plan on, if you go forward with the transmittal hearings, we do plan on having some more conversations with the public, especially when we're still working on, we're going to continue working on the code changes. So I think that will be another opportunity for us to really dive into the specifics such as Live Local. It was mentioned a little bit, we briefly talked about it during the third meeting at the Harry T. Moore Center, but we didn't get into it in too much detail.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Stokel.
Yep. Okay, just a couple clarifying questions. What we will be sending for the transmittal is pages 12 through 69, which would be what we're proposing to be changes to our comp plan. I just want to make sure.
That's correct.
Okay. Once we get the comments back from the state, it's not in our comp plan yet, so we will still have another opportunity to make changes. If they're significant, we would need to send it back for a transmittal.
Correct.
Okay, so we have that. And then to Vice Mayor's point, I did have a question on page 15 of the packet, which is, I think, page five of the document. I see the stripe-through is something that I kind of would like to stay there. The city shall encourage commercial redevelopment and reuse of residential properties for commercial uses to orient the development at intersections and deter dependency on collector and arterial road frontage. Especially with Live Local, I really want to make sure that we are keeping that in our comp plan, that we are trying to encourage commercial development, and I don't want to lose that. So that's something I would want to have stay. Other than that, I feel like going through it, you guys did a really good job, actually, of just kind of cleaning things up and then, I think, moving toward our intent of what we're trying to do with those three specific areas. That being said, I'm not 100% confident on my views on it solely yet, which is why I'm glad I'll still have another chance, too. But that was just one thing that definitely stood out to me that I'd like to keep in there.
Member Nelson.
So we're transmitting only pages 12 through 69, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because most of my questions came after that, and some of it was removing the minimum lot size for what you're referring to as West Titusville. And so I was sort of concerned about that. And is that something we really want to do? Second question was in terms of setbacks. Yeah, you've got a beautiful plan for setbacks and these wide sidewalks and trees. Most of those trees, at least on Main Street and I think on Tropic, too, are probably 100 years old. So does that mean we're going to cut down all the trees to replant trees and hope they grow? And I'm sort of like, I'm not real crazy about that idea. So to me, it's, you know, having an eight-foot sidewalk is beautiful, but in that particular area, I don't think we need an eight-foot sidewalk. It's not like you're going to have, you know, 10 people walking side by side through there. So I think we could cut back on that. I did see this one thing. Sorry, you guys. Sorry, you guys. But I was reading the news the other day, and there was a thing about Biden has a grant for solar energy for low-income people. It did. And I'm like, so, you know, you know, if these people can save money on their energy bills, you know, so be it. So I think we should encourage it. And the other thing that I was really concerned about, well, the setbacks on Tropic Street and Main Street. And you were talking about frontage on Buffalo Road, and we shall have businesses along Buffalo Road.
Buffalo Road, remember?
Yeah, next to the sewer plant. And I was like, how many businesses are we going to get out there?
Good question.
You know?
Good point.
I think we need to be realistic. If we can't see us moving the sewer plant, we just spent loads of money on it. I think all of us would have a heart attack if we had to move it and pay for it again. So, but I don't think it's realistic to think that businesses are going to want to move there. So those were the things that I was thinking about as we went through. And then I had another question for Brad. Can you explain density pool in English, like serious dumbing down?
You can correct me if I'm wrong here, but just think of it, you have, you take the total acreage of a particular area, regardless of how it's divided up by property owners, right, or streets or anything, you've got, in our case here, what we're proposing is, you recall, the downtown zoning district has several sub-districts.
Correct.
So just think of the downtown itself. Just look, think of the boundaries, vision that. You've got, I don't know, 50 acres of it, just ballpark. And so the density in there right now is 30 units per acre, so multiply that by 50 acres, and you've got your pool.
15 hundred.
Basically, so you've got the total acreage of that whole area. So what a property owner, individual property owner can do is pull from that and put as many units as they possibly can from that pool onto their property.
So what happens when you run out?
If you run out, then what you can do, the last, in other words, what happens is the last person coming in can't utilize what's left, then you potentially want to amend your comp plan. But we don't see that really realistically going to happen because the growth rate in the downtown is a lot lower than the growth rate in the city overall. This growth rate in the past 20 years of the city has been about 1% to 1.25%. The downtown has been a lot less than that. So in other words, the number of residential units that are allowed in the entire downtown... So in other words, the number of residential units that are allowed in the entire downtown, we don't even come close to coming, maxing that out, even in the planning horizon of the comprehensive plan, which is 20 years.
I just had this vision in my head that, you know, you had a density pool of, say, 1,000, somebody comes in and says, I'm gonna build an apartment for 900 people, and then...
They still have to meet all the other code requirements.
That's true.
So all those other requirements are gonna come into play to potentially control the number of residential units. So there's gonna be a carrying capacity on that property based on how we can actually serve it and the...
Concurrent.
Concurrent and everything else.
Okay, okay, got it. Thank you.
Anything else from council? I see none. Thank you very much, good presentation, and we will come back to you soon. Anything you want to add? Down there, you guys good?
That's all I have, sir.
You look like you were thinking, okay. All right, move on to petitions or requests from the public.
I don't know whether you got the, did they get this yet? Okay, well, you'll get it soon.
Start me up.
I'll go ahead and start, because I know you don't want me to slow down, right? Okay, are you ready? Okay, let me know when you're ready. Well, I'm gonna start talking anyway. My name is Stan Johnson, I'm an expert witness, and I'm giving you a list of things that you don't like to see because it's a list of nonsense and negligence and so forth by the city of Titusville. And today, I sent you a letter dated today, and so Wanda has that, and I have it in my hand, and I was gonna read some things to you that you do not want to hear. The title of this has to do with an arrest by one of your favorite people, me. I was arrested, a felony arrest, and it's titled, "Malicious Motive For The City To Charge Me With A Crime That Never Happened." How about that? And evidence that no crime was ever committed and no motive for the crime. So this is to the state attorney and so forth, that I'm representing myself pro se at this time. And it's interesting because I've got about, here's about 14 reasons why I didn't, there's no crime committed. Like, for example, I got a photo that shows that no crime was committed, other people have photos of no crime was committed and so forth. So it's kind of interesting that I was arrested, jailed, my car impounded, and no medicine, no life-supporting medicine while I was in jail and so forth. And it was interesting. But I did have, I did have three prayer meetings, Bible studies while I was in there, and that was interesting. But there was no books, and the TV? You couldn't hear a thing what the TV said, almost nothing you could hear because the room was reverberating from the concrete walls. But anyhow, last email I sent you on November the 14th, that was the last meeting, it closes with, it's saying this, "Please see many more of cities' dirty deeds as exposed by some of my findings on my business card." And that's what this is. This is a copy of the business card. And on this one, on this, today's email, it mentions, it says that, "I'm in good company. I've been arrested, I've been charged with a felony, you know, gonna take away my rights of having a weapon, voting, and so forth." It says, "I'm in good company as others are also treated unfairly and with prejudice," including who? I was working for. Fight for zero. Speak up Titusville, the right to clean water, Titusville Environmental Commission, and all residents of the city of Titusville. I'd like a couple more minutes. But anyhow, this is significant because you guys are guilty of this. This is not just a sin, this is a violation of law. Both of these are violations of laws, and they're serious, they're serious. So maybe you'll be, maybe when I go to court, you'll be held accountable for that. I hope so. May I have two more minutes?
I see none. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Next up.
Good evening. I'm Jean-Carina Collins, 3717 Granton Court. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members. I come to you tonight to just talk about our city parks. We have beautiful riverfront city parks, and they're in deplorable condition. They can't even be used in the morning. They're filled with people sleeping there, with their trash, with their destruction, their defacing of the property. I speak specifically about Sandpoint Park, Veterans Memorial Park, Rotary Park, and Kirk Point across from Eldian Cito. The sidewalk at Kirk Point has been torn up since the hurricane more than a year ago. The sidewalk was ripped out, it was never replaced, and now it's totally overgrown on the north end of the town. You can't even walk on it, there's nothing to walk on. The pier is still closed. Is there ever gonna be any resolution of that? And if, correct me if I'm wrong, but the parks are not for overnight use, and they're certainly not for setting up housekeeping and sleeping? The residents can't even use the parks every day. I frequently walk down to the river, the different parks, and you can't find a place to sit, and the trash is unbelievable. I see the trashmen come a couple of times a week when they pick up the trash, and I feel really badly for them because it's strewn everywhere, it's all over the sidewalks, and they're just not usable. Are there any plans to do anything about that?
Well, first thing I would say, and City Manager, and Kevin, you can jump in here, because I don't want to be inaccurate, but most of our parks are county-maintained, Brevard Public Parks and Recreation, and I'm actually on that board, and they have a member, I won't say responsible, checks every park. And some of the things you say are said, you know, there are some concerns. The homeless issue down at Sandpoint Park, I walk down there a lot, and there are times it's like, whoa. And then there are times where it's fairly clean, and I know that the police have made an effort to, I'll let you go on to what the police's effort is, City Manager, but I know that we have had an effort to clear the park, you know, no overnighting. So help me out with that.
Sure. There's no camping allowed in the parks, which means overnight sleeping, so we do patrol the parks, and we patrol the parks periodically before dark, after dark, during dark, early morning as well. And if there's campers in the park, we ask them to move along or cite them. But during the day, we can't move people along in a park.
I guarantee you, if you go to South Point or Kirk Point Park any day, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock in the morning, there are overnight guests there sleeping. They've moved off the tables sometimes, under the pergola, since all of the swings have been destroyed, and I guarantee you they're there every day. And I have called the non-emergency police number on numerous occasions, and they asked me, what do they look like? It's dark, I'm not gonna go and confront them to be able to give them a description. I guarantee you they're there, and it's just, it's just not right. So that's my concern.
I agree with you, I've seen it, I've walked the park many times, it's nice, and many, several times anyway, it's like, you're kind of looking over your shoulder, you know, I'm a big guy, I'm not afraid of most of that, but you don't know. And I'll just leave it at that. Kevin, are we the Kirk Point Park, is that our responsibility?
Yes.
And tell me again, what did you say about the, there's something that's washed out?
The sidewalk. The sidewalk on the north end of the park, going up to where the crosswalk is at Knox-McRae, the sidewalk is gone. It was ripped up last year after there was some damage from the hurricane, and, you know, it was staked as though it was going to be replaced, it was never replaced, that entire thing is overgrown with weeds and Florida vegetation. The pier is closed, I don't know if the pier was damaged or not, but it's been well over a year.
Let me let Kevin update us on Kirk Park for sure.
Yeah, so both the sidewalk, the shoreline, and the pier are under FEMA repairs, so they'll be getting repaired now the hurricane season is over by our staff. The pier will have to be repaired by a contractor, did sustained damage in the hurricane as well. They were all closed for safety, removed the sidewalk because it became a hazard, but our stormwater staff will be replacing the shoreline and the sidewalks in the next few months, and the pier will go out to a contractor, and then will be applied for reimbursement from FEMA due to hurricane damage.
All right, thank you. And I will bring your concerns to the Parks and Rec because I'm a liaison, I'm not on the board, but I go and I will, because I don't normally get those kind of concerns here, and now that I have it, I can take it and say, Sandpoint Park in particular.
And Kirk Point.
Oh, well, I don't think that's them, that's us, right?
That is us.
Okay, so thank you so much.
I appreciate your time.
Yep.
Hello there. Kathleen O'Rourke, Palmer Drive. I have sort of a leftover question, and I'm just bringing it up. I went a number of months ago to the presentation of the downtown and the plan for what's going on, and I guess the question I had, because it's pretty extensive, is, I don't know if this is the person who was working on it as a consultant, but I'd like to know where the consultants have done this previously and how successful was it? Because I'm really curious about that. It's a big investment, and I wanted to be sure that there's a track record, and I'd like to know specifically what places that had been done in before.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead and answer.
So we work throughout the state in a variety of communities, from Windmere to downtown Orlando, Orange County, all a variety of different projects. In terms of cost, what we're talking about primarily here is regulatory changes, which do not have a significant direct cost to the city, rather than, you know, hard investments in infrastructure, which would have larger costs.
I think what I'm more trying to understand is similar projects to what you're proposing for Titusville, what you've done, specific place under similar situations, and what the success of it was, because there's so many places where people talk about revitalizing downtowns, and it never actually ends up working. So I wanted to feel reassured that you've done it before and you've done it well, so I'd like to know a specific area, have you done a city before, like Titusville downtown? Is there one specific downtown you've done a similar thing with, and you could show how you did it and how successful it was?
So if you want more detail, I think we would be able to provide some materials.
Yeah, I think the detail you're asking for would be pretty much another meeting, but...
And it's not just me personally, it's the whole team that we've involved.
But I'd like to know what your team has done, and sort of have a chance to really look at it. So if you can provide that, that's what I'm looking for. Okay?
We can certainly share the information we have.
Okay, so I'll talk to you later about how to get it from you. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up.
Hello. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, Nick Haring, SCPA Development for the Framework Group. We are developers based in Tampa. I just want to take a moment to speak in favor of what you're considering for this comprehensive plan amendment. And first, compliment Brad and Sue and Eliza, your staff and consultants, on doing a really phenomenal job of developing this amendment plan and soliciting really great input from citizens of Titusville. Although I personally and my company, the Framework Group, are out-of-towners, participated in a few of these, it's sort of a fly on the wall, and it's a really great discussion, and it was well thought out and well-prepared. So developing the recommendation in front of you came with a lot of thought, from my view. Specifically, I wanted to talk about the density pool concept in downtown. We develop in downtowns across the state of Florida. There's significant, tremendous demand for downtown living, the lifestyle that comes with it, live where you work, live where you shop, live where you dine out, and we see it time and time again when cities make these moves, promote additional density in their downtowns, and pull other levers like incentives, things to be thought of later on. People come, people show up, developers like ourselves, people who want to live full-time in downtown, and the success sort of spins off from there. And I'm talking about the revitalization of downtown, economic opportunity. I think Titusville downtown in particular has enormous potential, it's got a great urban plan, it's got great access and visibility, it's got the waterfront, and this is the first and very important step into making it something really special over the long term. So just wanted to speak in favor of that, and I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for petitions or requests in meeting one? I see none. City Manager? Good? All right, we will reconvene at 6:30. Meeting adjourned.